May we call the special meeting of the Waukies School Board on August 29th to order with a moment of silent reflection? I will call the roll. Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Muft is excused. Mrs. Randall?
Here.
And myself. Thank you. We have two action items, and the first one coming under Human Resources, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Fee if she will please read that.
It is recommended that the school board approve the revisions to Policy Series 3000, Professional Staff, by eliminating Policy Series 4000 Support Staff and combining Policy Series 4000 with Policy Series 3000 Employment, as discussed and modified at the August 24th, 2011 meeting, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, please. Dr. Erdl, do you wish to say anything?
Well, I guess just probably similar comments that I'll share tomorrow morning with the teachers about the work that has been done. I think this is a starting point for all of the changes that are coming down. Certainly, we needed policies and procedures in place to start the school year, and there's going to be a lot of collaborative work from this point forward in looking at different aspects of our employment manuals and our policies, and we'll be bringing recommendations forward to the board throughout the next year, and I'm sure well beyond that. Once we recognize there's areas to be modified, we will do that, and we will bring recommendations to the board as we work through it.
Thank you. Board members, yes, please. Mrs. Fee?
Just one question. I note that the modification that we discussed last week has been made to 3141, specifically taking out Item 2 under the first bullet point. Have there been any other modifications that we should make note of prior to taking them up?
There was a modification to the administrative guideline that was suggested last time as well, but that is not being voted on. It's presented for informational purposes with that modification intact.
And we talked about a few clerical issues. Those have been cleaned up?
Clerical issues were given great attention and cleaned up.
Thank you.
And I would like to publicly thank Sherri for all her tremendous work on this. You know, she has other duties to start the school year, but the reality is she's just done an incredible amount of work getting this ready for the board presentation, so...
For the public, Sherri is?
Sherri Wensack is our Communications Department Secretary, and she is also the receptionist at the front desk.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliments you've given her. You have, Dr. Erdl?
Just one other comment I wanted to make, and I received a couple of questions today regarding sick leave, as there was an article in the paper this morning about different people doing different things with sick leave, and I think it's important to note that ours is remaining the same at this point, and I think that if we're going to... And I think it really relates to all the changes that we would be recommending, that there's a specific why as to the reason to do it, and that if it is to improve attendance, that we have a policy and procedures geared that will actually really improve attendance. And there's data that we'll need to take a look at it and see where we'll go, but for this year, we are sticking with our current practice.
Thank you. Yes. Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. I have one specific question about Policy 3141, the grievance procedure that Mrs. Fee referred to. By taking out Number 2, which I think referred to former school administrators...
Yes.
One is that an attorney is qualified, but two is such other individuals deemed qualified by the school board. So does that mean if anyone other than a school attorney is proposed, the board has to approve it?
Yes.
Attorneys do not have to be approved?
That's the way I would interpret your policy, but yes, is that basically the administration would pick a qualified attorney that meets the other bullet points as well, not just the first one, and that would be presumed to be an independent hearing officer, but that if the administration was someone else other than a licensed attorney, they would have to come to the board and get prior approval.
Okay. And having that bullet point removed doesn't prohibit qualified, former school administrators or people associated with school issues from serving?
I don't see it that way, but it would now require prior approval.
Okay. And just because it's been in the news, last winter, we were given this proposed schedule where administration would be presenting us with an employee handbook by the end of June, and now we're working on policies, and in the news, other school boards are considering handbooks. Can you just explain for people who might be watching how these policies relate to a handbook that we might produce?
Absolutely. The handbook is driven by our policies. Our handbook is a presentation of information about our employment policies to our staff. It sets expectations for their behaviors. It's basically a reference guide for our employee expectations, and then it also outlines for them some of the benefits of working for the Waukies School District, so it has that function. That handbook will be published electronically to staff tomorrow, pending approval of the policies that underlie them.
And at the previous meeting, when we talked about the Compensation Committee and the Personnel Committee, the Compensation Committee was recast to include employees because it was felt that they should have an input on the development of a compensation plan. And I think Mr. DeRose pointed out correctly that employees might consider work environments, work rules in an even greater weight than compensation when they decide where to work. So is there... Can you tell me why the decision was made to not include employees when we discuss these kinds of issues?
You know, most of what's in an employee handbook is really policy, and most of the policies that you'll see presented here tonight aren't really revisions of the policies themselves, most of them. They're really just the fact that they got combined. So, you know, I guess the question is whether or not there was a fundamental shift in the board's attitude towards its own policies merely because Act 10 passed, and I don't think that's true. I mean, I think that in most cases, the board has already spoken as to what its policy statements are. We're just clarifying if there was any changes because of Act 10. You know, that said, on an ongoing basis, you always have to be open to talking with employees. That's what the Human Resource Department is for. I presented this morning Longfellow's opening day, and that was really a big theme of my presentation, which was you need to have an open working relationship. Staff need to feel comfortable coming to Human Resources and to their administrators, and we need to be able to talk about workplace issues so that we have a positive work environment. Because I do agree with you. Many staff who come here comment on the welcoming environment, comment on how positive their experience is, and that's an important way for us to recruit people, and we want to be known for that.
One thing that concerns me about the process, while I think that the committee that worked on this did a really nice job, and I don't have... I think they're very thoughtful in what they put together. I am troubled by the fact that the board let it come to this kind of a time crunch and that we had to have two special meetings at the end of the summer for approval. And one thing I noticed, at least, I don't know if I'm correct on this, but have these policies been displayed publicly for public inspection and comment? I didn't see them on the agendas at all.
I would assume they would have been posted in our normal process when the meeting was posted last time. I mean, they were publicly available. We had a public meeting, so they were available. I don't know that there's any additional special distribution.
I think we should be more careful of that in the future and at least put the files up on the web like we do with other big documents, so the public at least has a chance to go through them and comment. I mean, we represent the public, and we regulate the activity of the school district primarily through our policies, and so the public, I think, has a... You know, they have a right and probably a big interest in how these are recast, especially these days with how things have changed in the educational system. So I would just caution the board to be more careful in the future that when we modify documents like this, that we make sure they're out on the web, easily available for the public to look at. Those are all my comments. Thanks.
Mrs. Randall?
Um, Dan, since you did alter an administrative procedure guideline, and that those were a big part of our discussion, could you just point out?
Yes, unless... We tried to separate what you're voting on. So what we printed from the administrative guidelines was not all of them, because again, most of them were small revisions to guidelines that have always been in place, but we recognized that there were new ones whether we were creating or significantly modifying, so I did print those for reference, and that is 3130, the transfer in reassignment language, 3131, the reduction in staff, which is new, and 3141, which is the grievance procedure. What was modified was the very last page of this booklet, the second-to-last paragraph, where there was a reference to whether or not the board could defer, again, to a hearing officer, the step four process, which just simply didn't make sense.
Sorry, 3141?
Yep, the very last page of the packet, second-to-last paragraph, which now reads that at step four, the board may decide in each situation whether it will review the record or hold a new hearing and make an independent decision. And so again, there was a reference in the prior version to an option to refer to a hearing officer yet again, which really would be... That makes sense.
Um... Uh, could I ask for separate action on 3131 policy? Uh, um...
I guess to be clear that, yeah, the initial guidelines, I'll...
Yeah.
I'll input out, I suppose.
Okay. That take care of it?
Well...
Okay. No, I didn't have... Okay. Mr. Croner?
I think one final comment based on Mrs. Randall's questioning, and I guess I'd like to ask the members of the committee that worked on this. Many of the issues that are in policies and also the administrative procedures were previously contained in the employment contract with the teachers, and the board approved the entire contract, which meant the board had approval power over every part of that contract. Now many... Some of those pieces are separated out into administrative procedures, which the board now has no control over. And I was just wondering, was that part of your discussion? Are the board members satisfied with what has been moved to administrative procedures, such as specific procedures like the grievance procedure, and giving the administration authority over those versus having it in a policy which the board would detain authority over? Did those discussions take place?
The main discussion on whether items should be policy or procedure had to do with the grievance procedure, because that was our main focus of the first two meetings. I will say that we, at the last meeting, we were presented with the draft guidelines, and the board members on the committee did have clear input into that. There is some disagreement among the board members on the committee as to one aspect of the guideline, which Mrs. Randall has just highlighted, but there was never a movement to take it all back into policy. And board members who were on the committee, please speak up if I'm speaking for you, but generally speaking, we were comfortable with having the general policy and the specifics and the guidelines, and I would say that there was board input into the development of those guidelines. So yes, they're not something that we vote on, but we did discuss and impact the development of those guidelines.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. 3112. Here we go.
It's on now. It's on now. No. It's on.
Okay. I wish to point out 3112, Section A, Staff Communications to the Board, where it says, "All official communications from staff members to the full board or its committees shall be submitted through the superintendent. This procedure is not intended to deny any staff member the right to appeal to the board on important matters through established procedures." Trying to cut through all that, what does it mean? I read that to mean an open-door policy, that if any staff member in this district has a complaint and issue a comment, that you have an open door to take it to the superintendent, who will forward it to the board. Is that... Is my reading of that correct?
Your reading of that is correct, and we clarified the administrative procedure that that underlines that, to make that explicit.
Okay. So the key there is that the communication must be through the superintendent, because as I've learned, when I've had questions, many board presidents have said to me, "Mike, talk to the superintendent first, and after you talk with the superintendent, you may understand this a little bit more," and I found that to be very useful. And sometimes I thought I had an issue or a problem or a concern, and the superintendent explains it to me, and then I understand things are really okay. Now, all that said, I'm making this point so that there's no room for any interpretation anywhere in the district that the school board does not want to hear from employees. The school board, all seven of us, I know from all my years on the board, not that many, but seven to eight now, that staff communications are very carefully read by all board members, but they must go through the superintendent. So there should be no interpretation that there's any desire to wall off the board from the employees or to not give the employees a voice in order to know what to say. Of course, please don't abuse it, but just so that's... The interpretation comes out of words in this room and not from someone else in the district, that that's the clear intent of that section.
Yes. Mr. Croner?
Ms. Meyer, since you brought that up, I have a very different interpretation, and this came about when we had the discussion about the library media specialists, and we received several letters from teachers, and some teachers who did not write letters because they felt this policy prohibited it. And I thought, and Dr. Erdl, if you could correct me, I thought in talking with you, it was determined that it is okay for teachers to send letters directly to the board. And I had actually thought that we ought to modify this policy to make that more clear, that there was some confusion among teachers as to whether they can actually express personal opinions to the board, and that this policy dealt more specifically with grievance procedures and official communications had to go to the superintendent and not to the board. In other words, they couldn't contact us about a step in the grievance procedure. That had to go through the superintendent. But if one or more faculty members wanted to express an opinion about a board decision, they were free to write letters to us and not violate this policy. And I'm curious to see if others have that interpretation, because I remember having those conversations at that time.
Michael?
If that is your reading of this, and the rest of the board agrees, then I'm... That's fine. I'm fine with that, too. I just want... From my perspective, I would like the employees to know that we do have open ears to hear what they have to say. If you're wishing to change the wording, in order to clarify this, I would be supportive of that. If... I know that if something goes to Dr. Erdl, it does come to us. If people ask, then he forward it. Now, if we want the extra assurance that people can communicate directly to us, perhaps they should copy the superintendent, so we'd be sure all board members... You know, I'm not cemented in with any particular words. I think our intent is the same.
Dr. Erdl, am I correct, and that was your interpretation of the policy, that teachers were free to send opinions to the board?
Perhaps I can shed some clarification on that. This policy and our policy, our administrative guideline regarding resolution of employee concerns are separate and distinct from our employees' rights to advocate for matters of public concern. And so none of our board policies limit our employees' rights to speak out about matters of public concern. We would not interpret them in a way that violates their First Amendment rights. The library issue in particular was very clearly a matter of public concern, a great matter of debate in our community, and I think when the line has to be drawn as to whether it's a matter of public concern or a personal employment grievance, we try to be liberal in that interpretation. That said, I don't think that employment grievances and concerns about your employment are generally by courts not considered matters of public concern. They're employment matters, and employees should follow that process. If there is not a specific procedure, there is a general procedure, which basically allows you to basically have your complaint heard by the superintendent, and if you're not happy with that, then come to the board. Obviously, when you're talking about employment concerns, we want to funnel them through the appropriate grievance procedure or general procedure, so that the decision could get reviewed, made in a timely manner, made in an appropriate manner and thoughtful manner, and then all the information can be presented for the board. But those policies aren't really applicable to political matters, matters of public concern, and we don't interpret our policies in such a way as to impede the First Amendment rights of our employees.
So in the employee handbook, then, will it say elsewhere that staff members are free to contact the board to express opinions on district issues? Because I know some... I mean, the reason this came up is because we heard that some staff members did not communicate with us about that librarian issue because they felt the policy didn't allow it, and so there was some confusion.
I think I might have to redo a little writing tonight.
I'm just asking if that's what...
I can't think of explicitly... It's a 40-page summary of our policies. I don't know that that's in there. I guess I would say my expectation is that all of our public employees understand that they're public employees and have constitutional rights, and that the handbook is not a civics book. It's an employment manual, but we certainly don't want there to be confusion on that. I think that's something that would be well-advised to put in there, because it's not... I don't think that's explicit, as I think about the draft of that book.
Okay. Thank you.
Please help me, Mr. Jean. At the board meeting with the concerns of the library, I had a file this thick with letters. I would say the high percentage was from librarians, and I referred to that. No one has a mis... Any... I don't think a misunderstanding that they can communicate with us via telephone or written message. Many of them know that I prefer a telephone call, but I am... I will always respond to any note or telephone call that I receive. Is that... Isn't that in order?
Yeah, I absolutely think so. And I think that the other thing to remember is that this is the board's policy, and so if you were to receive communications, my assumption is that each of you would evaluate it in your own mind about its... Whether it was appropriate or not and respond accordingly. And in the end, it's the board that decides whether or not you thought it should have been handled in another way. You know, the intent here is to be as open as possible, and again, we also, when you're talking about employment concerns, we want those to be funneled through the appropriate decision, because it's not efficient, I guess, to have employment concerns go directly to the board unfiltered, because we need to know about them, because we can't address concerns that aren't brought to our attention. So we want to encourage staff to bring concerns to administration's attention so we can address them. And there are many specific policies. For example, our anti-discrimination, anti-harassment policies. We really don't want those going right to the board, because we really want to investigate and fulfill our obligation to prevent harassment and discrimination, and the board's not necessarily the best group to take that kind of quick and decisive action. I mean, we have to be together to take action. There's to be voting. There's to be hearings. I mean, that's not quick. So in most cases, I would say employees would not be necessarily well-served by going directly to the board with those concerns. But, you know, we don't interpret our policies... Well, the administration doesn't interpret... We don't apply the policies of the board narrowly. I don't think it's ever been the direction. And again, matters of public concern, employees have every right, as every other citizen, to come in and petition this board.
Any further... Mr. DeRose, do you have something? Your eyebrows are very furrowed.
So we're drawing a line between an official communication and an unofficial communication? Because this thing here says they got to go through Phil, and you're telling me, we're playing ring around the rosary here, you're telling me everybody can send us a letter. Phil's trying to figure out where the letters are going. This thing says they all go to Phil Erdl. What are we doing here?
You know, we are... We are an arm of the state. We're bound by the U.S. Constitution.
So why doesn't our policy reflect that?
I would say it says the word official, official communications.
Yes.
And we have to remember that the U.S. Supreme Court and the Seventh Circuit has been very limiting in terms of what kind of public employee speech is entitled to protection under the Constitution. We can't make our policy books a textbook on constitutional law. I... If I were... I am available in the Human Resources office to help clarify for people where that line might be. We're more than willing to talk to them about their issues, but public employees do not have an absolute right to present every grievance to the board or to talk about it publicly. There is a line. There's a line between matters of public concern and complaining about things in your job. It is not an easy line. It's a long line of cases, and we do certainly do our best to inform employees. I think that this policy, 3112, does a very nice job of letting employees know that official communications should come through the superintendent, and when you're talking about official communications, you're talking about communications that relate to the job that you do and the job that you do for the superintendent, and things should come up through the proper channels, whether that's through their supervisor, through HR, through another director, to the superintendent, and then to the board, because there's not an absolute constitutional right to comment on everything related to your job. It's not, because we're trying to be difficult, and if people have hesitancy about where their communication lies, I would advise them to call my office, and we'll talk about it. Chances are, we would say, if you really feel the need to send that to the board, send it to the board as a matter of your conscience, and that's important. But if I could direct them to the policy that it should be filed under, we would process it and file under that policy.
Mr. Meyer?
So just so I understand, nonofficial, they can come to the microphone, essentially, for example?
Yes.
And come to the microphone in this meeting. Official, all they need do is send it to Phil Erdl and say, "Please forward to the board."
Yes. That's a slight simplification. There's a window of time, and they should meet with him, and he should talk to them, but yes, absolutely.
Right. And to me, the purpose is so that there's no behind the superintendent's back, because that's just me now. Ultimately, nothing can get fixed if the superintendent doesn't know about it. So it's either you can come to the microphone on nonofficial matters. If it's official and you wish to communicate to the board, you send it to the superintendent and say, "Please forward to the board," because there's no... We have no secrets from the superintendent in communications to the board.
Correct.
And to clarify my statement, by contrast with earlier statements I've made, this is not to say the employees can tell us what to do. This is to say, we listen, and we consider what the employees have to say, and we get opinions from a broad spectrum of stakeholders, including the employees, and our inputs are not just limited to the employees, and this assures that we will have input from employees if employees choose to provide input.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Croner?
Sorry to keep going on. Mr. Murray, you say things that take it a step beyond my comfort sometimes. When you... When you said, "We have no secrets from the Superintendent," I think that if someone, a teacher sends me just an email, "Here are my thoughts about this," I might reply and say, "Thank you for your comments." But I wouldn't necessarily forward that to the Superintendent. I don't know if you meant to imply that we are all supposed to forward every email we get to the Superintendent? That a citizen can contact me, and I can reply either with information or say, "Thank you for your information, I'll keep that in my, in mind when I think about this issue." But I don't think everyone forwards every email like that to administration. Is that what you meant?
I mean to say that if someone speaks to me about school district business, they should assume I will communicate it to the Superintendent. If I don't think it is worthwhile to do so, because, for various reasons, as you're saying, I won't. But if, I, I don't think I'm effective if I'm withholding anything from the Superintendent that's of a matter of his interest, or involving a matter that he's interested in.
Then we can finish an agreement.
Is there any other comment? I will say it, even though there is no one in the audience this evening outside of the news, but does anyone have any public comment with this matter? Seeing none? May I take a roll call vote? Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Giroux?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muftal is excused. Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you.
And thank you for the discussion. I hope it cleared up some, a great deal of time that we've spent on this issue.
Yes.
If I may just, a point of order, I don't believe that your vote was recorded. You didn't state yes or no.
I said me.
I know.
Yes.
Did you vote?
Yeah. Okay. Have a yes?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyer, would you read the second item, please?
The District Development Plan for 2011 to 2012. It is recommended that the school board endorse the District Development Plan for 2011 to 2012, as discussed at the August 22, 2011 Board Meeting. Endorsement represents the school board's support of the administration and staff's work toward the goals, initiatives, and projects, and ISO move.
Seven. Mrs. Randall, seconds. Is there discussion? Mr. Cronin?
I, this, I was surprised when I saw this on the agenda on Friday afternoon. I would like to understand better why it's on the agenda tonight and not at a regular Board meeting. I don't think there's any time, specific timing issue that would prevent anything from being worked on or moved forward.
The timing is, is, to me, critical for this evening, because of tomorrow morning, when I meet with the entire staff and talk about the District Development Plan, that I can speak about the endorsement of the school board behind it.
I'm uncomfortable with that. I mean, the Director of Student Learning is not here, I still have some questions about some of the goals. I don't think it's appropriate to rush something like this forward. You know, it doesn't need to be.
Well, I, I, my recommendation is that we, we do it, and for my, that simple reason. Anything on here, I guess, if I haven't heard from you anything that you're uncomfortable with or don't like, and you've had this out for two, two weeks, I believe. But if there's decisions that are not administrative and that are for a Board vote, whether it's a charter school or anything else, it's going to come forward to the Board for approval, prior to anything taking place, so that the Board will have that opportunity to vote yes or no on, on, well, on this or any other recommendation that we bring forward.
I guess my general concern is I'm still kind of unclear as how we're going to approach our district focus and reading, and what some of the terms in that mean, and how we're going to analyze and focus on some of our goals. So if those, some specific items can come before the Board at future meetings in the next month or so, that, that would be okay. But I'm not comfortable moving ahead without having more discussion on, on some of this.
Is there discussion? Yes, Mayor Giroux. Okay. Robert R. Lavor, she's called for the vote, so we can proceed correctly?
Correct. Thank you. You should have asked for community comment.
I'm sorry?
I believe that even though there are no members of the community, we should ask for community.
Is there any community comment on this resolution or this recommendation? Seeing none? Roll call vote. Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Giroux?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before this Board this evening?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
I'll adjourn.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Then we'll do another roll call. Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Giroux?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Um...